Let's call the city council work session for November fourth of order. A roll call, please, Sue.
Mr. Mayor, although it's newly noted, the exception of Councilor Curtis Gaveroy, I would like to announce to the audience that unfortunately, we don't have any microphones or sound tonight, so except from the testable table. So we really need people to abide by being quiet in the audience. And if you can't, and you have a conversation, if you take it out in the lobby. And that's it for reminders.
Awesome. All right, council agenda and meeting, anything, folks, from the business session? Hearing none, let's move on then. All right, so any other business items that we have before we get into our main oil business here this evening? Anyone? No, hearing none. All right, so now we have the very good fortune of being able to select from a full slate of candidates for our District Five opening position that is vacated by Mike Corey. First, again, before we go any further, I think historically, as far as I can tell, having five candidates for one position is fantastic. We don't see that. A lot of times, it's hard to get one person, much less five. So we really thank you all for applying, the five of you. And it just shows, I think, the importance of local government. And I think it's hugely important, and we're happy that you do it. That's the good news. The bad news is, we can only select one of you. And that's where it gets, you know, a bit more challenging, and it will be challenging tonight for the council. But I have handed out to you a list of the committees, the standing committees, for the city, and some of you have served on them in the past, serving currently. So if you do not happen to be chosen this evening for the opening position, we would strongly encourage you to stay in touch with us, look for vacancies, and particularly at the end of the calendar year, Traffic Safety Commission will have a vacancy, so consider that. That's, again, on your list, and as for most of us up here know, that roads and sidewalks and streets, parking are pretty important things in the community, so keep that in mind. Dawn Karen, who is here in the back, she is your contact for anyone who'd like to apply for one of these committee positions, so there it is. Next, what, I guess we'll talk a little bit about how we hope this goes this evening. We've got an hour and a half in order to interview the five candidates and then make a decision. The thought is tonight that we will go ahead and make a decision, a recommendation as to who the person will be, but we won't actually swear you in until the next meeting on the eighteenth, so that's the thought. In terms of format, you received a list of eight questions, or you should have received those. Given time constraints, I don't think we're going to ask all five of you all eight questions. I think we'll pare it down a little bit. We're hoping to have, each of you have about ten minutes with the council, and then we'll go into deliberation following that. So you all know, the councilors each have, they have a list of the questions where they will make notes. We've then also got these scoring sheets, so what we'll plan to do is to score five through one, five being the highest, one being the lowest, and it'll be just a matter of counting the votes, and the person who has the most number, the highest numbers, will be the next city councilor from District Five. Any questions on any of that, any councilors? The only other thing is, it's been suggested that we ask whoever the person is who is being interviewed, stay in the room, the other four, if you'd like to exit to the lobby. Again, it's an open meeting, so you don't have to, we're just doing it as a matter of courtesy for the other candidates, so that's really up to you. The rest of you all can stay, it is an open meeting, and so there we go. Any other questions? Liz?
Hi, hi, I'm Debbie. Are these, or do you have your question, so that we can collate, or?
No, I think just overall scoring for the candidates, so candidates five through one. And your notes then on the questions will hopefully lead you to that score, so that's the idea. We haven't figured out what we're going to do in the event of a tie, but we'll sort of cross it as we come to it, if that happens. But anyway, so that's it. Any other questions on process? Any of the candidates' questions on process? All right, all right, so let's do this. All right, I think we'll just go back to alpha order by last name, so Merrill, I think that is you, is first, so.
Exciting.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. And the others, we'll just, we'll call you as you go. The next will be Mike McBride, then Nick Mares, Jean Pirus, and Chris Plummer, last but not least. All right, and then councilors, I think the questions that I thought might be most pertinent have been circled on your question sheets there.
You.
It should be.
Can you hear me?
Yep, there you go, first. All right, so if, is this being recorded, sir, is it just?
It's being recorded, that's the little, the little.
Gotcha, okay. All right, so, let, we'll jump right in, then, Merrill, so why are you interested in serving as a councilor?
I think, you guys hear me?
Yep.
I think that, I grew up in Burnonia, Oregon, I grew up raising cattle on a small farm there, and so really, the hard work ethic and community-minded residents really shaped my upbringing, and so I, in any role or in any place I've been, I've always looked for ways in which I can serve my community. And so that's something that I would like to do here, is serve my community. I think that Newburgh has spent the last few months in the visioning process and looking at how we want to see our community grow and develop over the next twenty years, and I would like a voice in the process, and I would like to raise those with others as well in that process of decision-making. I think that I have, have a real mission and a real passion to make personal connections with people, even people who, you know, fuck with whom I may not seem to want to hire. But I've taken that passion and that ability to make personal connections through collaboration, to learn, a willingness to listen, and a real desire to learn.
What is your understanding of the role of a counselor, and what has prepared you to be a councilor?
So as elected officials, councilors are, they represent the most of the community, residents, businesses, and organizations, and they do that through some of the bigger picture things, such as visioning and goal setting, as well as some more specific details, so revenue, zoning, policy, things of that nature. I think my experiences are very vast and have prepared me for being a counselor. I got my undergraduate degree at UC Berkeley in social organization and environmental policy, and my grad degree in sustainability, or specifically grad certificate in sustainability, so I think I have a really nice educational foundation as well. I was the organ, climate dialogues organizer for a nonprofit, so I, my goal really was to create roundtable discussion between organs, youth educators, and state policymakers, the Global Morgan Commission, as well as legislators, senators, and representatives. And so really, I have experience in creating inclusive space and bringing people to the table and creating dialogue. I'm a small business owner, so I had the experience of completely running a small business in the area, and my business is outside of Yonk, in Compton Church. And also, I have some experience moving around with community help, I spent many years as a volunteer doula, which, I don't know, for those of you who don't know what a doula is, you know, a person who provides physical, emotional, and mental support to women while they are in labor. And this informs my ability or my role as council, because whenever I walked into the room, I never knew who I was walking into support. There were often barriers to communication, so it was really developing cross-cultural communication, learning of how to create space, how to support, how to listen, but doing that also in collaboration and with the community. So that really created a real passion of mine for supporting women and families. So I think that while my experiences are very varied, I have insights into a lot of the issues that are important to our community and to council.
Okay, share with us your assessment of any recent decision of the city council.
So, as Newburgh's been doing our visioning, the Newburgh Visioning Project, I'm very excited about the idea of the relationship building initiative and building relationships, specifically the connections, but looking for connection with disengaged youth. I would encourage us to broaden the scope to all youth. I think my experience working with the organ, private dialogues, and getting youth involved in looking at policy and solutions, as well as my experience as the chair of the Sustainability Group here in Newburgh, and working with high school students and middle school students, is really finding ways to get all of our youth to engage in solutions and in their community and in their future. And so I would encourage us to expand it to all youth, I know Leah Rogers is talking about doing a youth or student Yom and Dole council, and so that I think would be really exciting. So that is one thing that I've been thinking a lot about. Another thing is the goal of trying to increase our new students' residential zoning for high density housing, looking at increasing affordable housing in the area. I know that Newburgh is looking at increasing our urban growth boundary, and we're looking at doing that in a more traditional method, which runs up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which looks like something costly thing to do, but, so I would really encourage us to look very closely at those costs, and whether they are effective and will get us really to the goal of what we see our community looking like in the future.
Sure. What do you feel is the most critical issue facing the city of Newburgh today?
So I think that there are many critical issues, or many very important issues. It seems that the most imminent decision that's important to the council right now is the selection of a new city manager, that in addition to the vision and goal setting are very important aspects of what's been done so far, and really finding ways of supporting the community and increasing communication with local residents. Looking at the bigger picture, I think that really finding ways of increasing evidence of growth through smart policy, through sustainable development, capacity building, ensuring wider and inclusive access to public services, all of those things, I think, will unlock further economic opportunity for our town. I think our youth are very loudly calling for us to realize sustainability as a lens, and the beautiful thing about that is, if you do that, you can use it right, and you can make connections with affordable housing, you can make connections with transportation, development, so that, those are, those are the things, yeah.
All right, I have one off-script question for you, and this will vary depending on who the candidate is, but, all right, so you've lived here, pre your application about a year and a half, which, okay.
Since 2017.
2017, okay. So, I mean, that's not a whole lot of time.
Nope.
So I guess what the question is, is how do you feel you're prepared to represent both, you know, the residents of District Five and then the rest of the community, given that relative issue of my time?
Well, I think that I'm prepared in the way that there are quite a few new people moving into our community, and so I really have an understanding of the new families that are moving into our community, so in that way, I think I can really make connections with them and with our community. Also, I think just in general, I am new, but I have worked and always worked very hard at making personal connections with people, and so getting out and having conversations with our neighbors, which I've been doing, you know, asking them what things are important to them, are really the way I think that I would effectively represent my area and my neighbors.
Okay, awesome. If you could send Mike in when you head on out, that would be great, Mr. McBride. Patrick, your first question.
Shall I stay out?
In a way, it's up to you, whatever's most convenient to you. Doesn't matter, no, we can stay. Good evening, Mr. McBride. So as I said, I think we're going to pare down the questions, we'll have about ten minutes, and then go from there, and I think Patrick's going to lead off the questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First question is, why are you interested in serving as a councilor?
Well, I've always been involved in politics to one degree or the other. This is my hometown, and I was born and raised here, I've never lived anywhere else. And, you know, my heart's desire is to work with a team of people that comes up with ideas that's going to move this town in a direction that still keeps it livable, keeps it viable, a great place to grow, and, you know, I love this place. And so that's my heart's desire, is to be part of this organization, and, you know, I was on the board of directors of the Shenanah Park Recreation District for thirty-five years, so I kind of, I kind of like being in the process and being able to, you know, come up with ideas and things like that, to help people.
Great.
What is your understanding of the role of the counselor, and what has prepared you to be one?
My understanding is, is to, you know, facilitate the policies that the council makes, come up with ideas, work together, that can help the community, to be able to solve problems. And I think my experience working on the Shenanah Park Recreation District has helped. I was also, for three years, on city council, I mean, after 2003, was elected, but as a result of a divorce that I went through in 2006, I had to move, and so by moving, I was outside the district. So I do have some experience in that. So I think, you know, both sides of the art district, and I have some experience here with the city council in the past, I think that does give me some advantage.
Yes. Share with us your assessment of any recent decision of the city council.
I would say one, one reason, one decision that city council made, I think about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, about affordable housing, and doing with smaller blocks. It's not, it's not something that I would probably voted for, because I don't think that's the way to address the problem of affordable housing. I would rather see us look at how do we bring businesses with family sustaining wages to this community? The only way you can do that is you have to bring land into the rural growth boundary, have it specifically set up for, you know, for manufacturing, because otherwise, if you don't plan for it, it will never happen. So that was a decision that I think, it kind of bothered me a little bit now, you know, am I going to go around and dadnap the city about that, so, you know? I mean, we, and it could be that perhaps my feeling about that is based on not a lot of factors, maybe you guys had more of the information than I've ever heard about, so I'm going to leave that in your guys' court, but that would be, that would be one. I have another one if anybody wants to. The other one would be when we let loose a little control of our fire department. Now, I have nothing against TBF and R, I mean, they are a top-notch organization, the training is absolutely great, and the requirement is good. The only thing that I would have liked to see the city do is look at sitting in a special district. We could have kept our identity and had our fire department be Newburgh's fire department. I mean, the biggest thing, I think, that was a concern to me is that, what if they had a law to manage open Washington County someplace? And, you know, it's going to increase the taxes, and maybe, you know, people here in Newburgh, we vote against it, but because you're outvoted by people in maybe the rest of the organization, that would be a concern to me. I think it's too late at this point, you know, we can't go back. So I'm glad that they're here, but that's, that would have been something, if I was on city council at the time, I would have been saying, let's look at doing a special district, let's look outside the box a little bit. I did mention that to a city council member several years ago, when that talk was first coming out about switching and going to TBF and R, and he didn't seem to really think it was a viable option, but when I asked him, had he looked into it, he said, no. So, you know, that's, that's two things.
Okay, what do you feel is the most critical issue facing the city of Newburgh today?
I think it's planning for the future to have family sustaining jobs. Because if you don't do that, then what you have is a situation where people are moving here, and then they're commuting. And so then it blocks up the roads, you have people not really attached to this community because they're spending most of their time.
At work.
And driving. And so I think that that's, by doing that, we keep our identity. Otherwise, we grow without a solid plan for how we're going to not become a bedroom community. We have the mountain ranges around here, which is going to somewhat shield us, but I really think that planning for that, I think that's the most important thing, because if you've got good jobs here, then, you know, they're going to, they're going to bring good people into this community, and it's going to, I think, help in all the taxes, you know, also on the tax base, wouldn't it?
All right, so one question that's off-script, and this one, and again, not to put you on the hot seat, but you're on the hot seat, sure you are. So since this, since this seat became vacant, which is, you know, a month or a month and a half, we've had a few city council meetings, and we haven't seen you at some city council meetings. Is there a particular reason, or, not that it was required, but we're just curious?
Well, I have a couple of things that I've been doing, and so, you know, kind of parrying back, because, you know, if I get chosen to be part of this organization, you know, I definitely be here now. I need to clarify something, and it could jeopardize everything, and if that happens, well, so be it. We plan to go to Israel the thirteenth of this month, and so I would be gone on the day that you decided to swear me in. It's something I can't change. And if I did, my wife probably wouldn't be thrilled happy, but, you know, we planned it several months ago, and so that's, I do want to, and if that puts me out of the running, then, you know, I don't care at all, I mean, that would be the best decision.
All right, great. All right, well, all right, anything else, folks, at this point? Okay. If you could invite Nick in, that would be great, and then you're welcome to stand, and please let Merrill know she's welcome to stay here, if you'd rather.
Okay, so you don't want us after we've talked?
Yeah, she's still here, you're welcome to come back in.
Okay, all right.
That'd be great, thank you. Good evening, Nick. Oh, yes. Oh, cool, okay, great, thank you. All right, so, you know, as mentioned, we're not going to ask all eight questions that we gave you in advance, but we'll ask you four, so does somebody want to lead off?
I will.
Okay. Why are you interested in being a councilor?
So as, just for timelines, by the way, I was just reading off this, I was kind of scared, but from what I gathered from a meeting with a lot of you personally, there's one thing we really have something in common, and it's just a passion to serve people, and really, that's where it all comes down to why I'm interested in being a councilor. And also, any form of government, the job of representing a group of people needs to get the forefront of the decision-making. I truly enjoy walking and talking throughout my community, I've been for a number of years, I have a really good sense of what the public sees as problematic, but also what they see as really good, and what keeps people here, and what makes people want to move here, so I kind of have a good sense of what's going on out there. I think we collectively need a holder of leadership, responsible, and remember the order of power. And also, for many years, I've also, I've been asked to run for the council, and as many of you know, I ran for mayor in the last, in the last election, but due to a lot of personal issues, I've said not to for a lot of years, but given my current situation, health-wise, nerve stuff, I have a lot of time dedicated to it. So I think I have the time needed now to do the job and properly serve the community.
What is your understanding of the role of a counselor, and what has prepared you to be a councilor?
Well, simply put, simply put, the role of a counselor should be at the eyes and ears of the community members that live within the district. I prefer to think of the council as a board of representatives. To truly represent a group of people, we need an open line of communication and respectful dialogue among council members. Personal agendas can have a really good role in our, in our thought process, but it can't drive our logic when we, when we discuss policy. I believe this is a responsibility that lands squarely on the shoulders of council members, to keep a respectful and open dialogue on all issues facing the council with consideration. As far as preparation, besides becoming familiar with the charter and council rules, which is good to read, by the way, I've spent hundreds, hundreds of hours over the years walking and talking, as I've said before, within my communities. I think without the knowledge of the needs and wants of the people living here, we really can't do, really can't, really can't perform the job necessary of a representative. I also currently serve on the Citizens' Rate Review Committee, going on my third term, and I've learned an incredible amount on how our local government works through that committee. I've also attended, attended council meetings fairly regularly, as regularly as I could or can, for the past eleven years, just to stay up to date on current issues. And I, I'm also, outside of local government, I've also managed to learn a lot about respectful discussion, with most having a different opinion than mine at the state level through my organization of Veterans First, or the state, and I do look forward to putting those skills into practice here at Old Overland.
Share with us your assessment of any recent decision of the city council.
Over the past few months, there's been quite a bit of really good resolutions that benefited Newburgh. I think one decision made at actually the last council meeting, that really stood out to me in a big way, and that was a proclamation. A proclamation for October 31st being hand-mong appreciation. A proclamation for October 31st being hand-mongued appreciation night. Now, the reason behind it is I don't know Ms. Young very well. But what I do know is that she has been and will continue to be an asset to the City of Newburgh. The proclamation on its own is somewhat common. But what stood out to me was the sincerity of the council and the time taken to honor a truly wonderful person that has done so much. So by you guys taking the time and really showing everyone your appreciation for a city employee, it allowed the public to see the council as people, not politicians. And I think that's extremely important to portray to the public often. And everyone was very encouraged to see, he genuinely gratitude Young. And I do look forward to seeing him again soon.
Now, it's my turn.
Your turn now, okay?
What do you feel is the most critical issue facing the City of Newburgh today? That would be number six.
Number six, thank you. I struggle with this one. Because there's a lot of big ticket items that, you know, you hear about online, Facebook, stuff like that. So I think there's a lot of noise about a lot of different issues, such as affordable housing. And that's always, obviously, a hot topic. I do have some ideas on that one. Rising taxes are always gonna be an issue with the public. You know, roads, everything like that, all the infrastructure stuff, I think are right up there in issues. But I don't think it's, I don't think they're critical at this point. I personally believe that the lack of public trust of this council and the limited communication from the council to the public is actually the most critical issue facing Newburgh right now. The city needs to trust its leaders. It needs to have faith that the public's concerns are being heard and taken into consideration if we are to have any long-term success. But please don't misunderstand me. I'm not saying that this council ignores the public. What I am saying is that's a perception held by many, if not the majority, of the people that I have spoken to personally. Leadership or representation is successful only if those being represented trust their representation. This isn't to say that the public has to agree with everything, obviously. But they certainly have to feel heard and at some point given careful consideration in and of from open forum. And transparency is key to trust in the council.
All right, I have one question that's off-script. And it's, in your, in your application, you say that politically, I would say I differ than most of the current council. Could you elaborate on that, particularly as we're talking about local government?
Sure. I kinda thought that would come up when I wrote that, because I didn't agree with that. So I can use the example of when I was running for, in the mayoral election. So there were a couple of really hot topics that people, I really didn't agree with a lot of those different issues. Now, granted, those issues have no purview here in the council. So what I meant by that was, I would consider myself a very conservative Republican. And I, just from talking with everyone and seeing how everyone views politics, I just thought I was somewhat, I lead a lot more to the right than most of the people on this council, given the bigger issues, if that makes sense. So, yeah.
Can I follow on?
Sure.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus, I wanna know what your answer is, like a real answer. So kind of going back to the question around the assessment of the council, what you disagree with. So if we, if, assuming that you believe that we have different political views, what's an assessment of this city council that you would view as very different politically than you have? Not hot button issues at the national level, but at the city and local government level, what is an issue that we have voted on that you would say is different? You have a different opinion?
Great question. I think, honestly, I can't pick out a specific issue or a specific ordinance or a specific decision. But I can kind of make it more relative. Let's take housing. I mean, that's obviously a huge problem here. The way to go about fixing that problem, I believe I'm a lot different in my approach. So me, I don't, I don't like little things stacked up on top of each other, just packing everyone into a real tight, you know, four houses in a half acre of, it's just, I don't like it. I don't like really tall apartment buildings. I think it detracts from the beauty of our city. Now, is it necessary? Of course. I mean, you have to put people somewhere. But to go, to go about it just a slightly different way, and I was, I was gonna talk about this later if you guys decide to put me on the council. But such as getting the city more involved with housing, providing infrastructure perhaps, and not putting it solely on builders and developers and stuff like that, just give them a little bit more incentive to drop their base price of their homes. So I think perhaps it wasn't a great choice of words politically different, but my, my strategy and my way of going about things, I believe, are just a little bit different.
All right, well, thank you. Can you send in Jean? And you're welcome to stay here. We'll keep on here. Thank you. Good evening, Jean. All right, and I've been asked, all councilors, we gotta, we'll have to speak up so that the folks in the back can hear us. Anyway, who wants to lead, Elizabeth, you wanna lead off today, this one?
Sure.
All right.
Hello. First question, why are you interested in serving as a councilor?
Newburgh has been really good for our family, I mean, their divorce, and actually wanting to return to Newburgh. So being retired now, I think it's a good opportunity to find a way back to city and, you know, and to just, kind of like to, my, my thing is to be open to everyone, listen to everyone. You can't always agree with everyone, but you should find ways to, 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 to.
Counselor Johnson?
What is your understanding of the role of a councilor and what has prepared you to be a councilor?
The role of a councilor is basically, I'm saying, policy.
Question four.
Policy and goals, I assume. And I've done this in business settings as well as volunteer. I have a lot of experience with strategic planning and problem solving. And I've looked together and discussed, and I've sort of researched and, and where, where other points, how to deal with those, and how people, um, tell me, and give me, and leave that. So I think I pretty much have all the skills, experience of those things. And it's just a second, should we, my question? And I also look looking at people with different opinions and different points.
Please.
Okay, so share with us an assessment, share with us your assessment of any recent city council decision.
There were quite a few that I've seen. And for one that really struck me most was the discussion about the new permanent city manager. And I was very impressed how you all seemed to really take it at heart after a number of interns and these other situations that we are not taking this lightly, that although you have a deadline, you want a resolution not to just record it, it's not to just accept the best of what matters, but to continue the work for the great person. And I also think the concept about is it important to live here?
It's big capital letters, liveability. Which to me is, yes, it starts with affordable housing. But that's affordable housing for all the points. That people moving out here from Brooklyn. It's cheaper than living in very tiny homes. Income they have. I also feel livability, this is maybe why I love it so much is that there are some jobs here, definitely more. When you live in more hidden place, you have less time. You have more time for your family. And you also have more opportunity, meaning all the time you're doing it. Instead of saying, huh, I'm too tired. And so, and I think also, livability is about embracing this growing diversity that we've heard a lot to see. When we lived here before, seventy-nine to eighty-two, as a kid in town, in Fred Meyer, I think there were no bars at that old shared cafe. And it was a great place. It didn't change. And wine is certainly just something, don't want to put the concept of wine or tourism, but it's got to be definitely a little bit of those things. And we also like the courage of people to come here. And so, we can present this as the best way. I feel like, I don't know if that's done, it's too idealistic, but you gotta start with everything. The other thing about diversity is, I don't want, we need to lump these people to a kind of political place, but we cannot leave, entirely just let us out. You know, compared to a long time ago, step in our ways, they must have been killed by that. So, I can imagine, you know, we have, we emphasize on one, tourism. We have some huge things up there, well, actually, best food, but people love the area. But we also have some people that have just good skills. We are diverse community, alone, which is interesting.
All right, Jen, one question that's off script, so. And, you know, from looking at your application, I haven't seen that you've served on a city committee as yet. Is there, is there a reason for that?
Well, the reason, about a year and a half ago, we retired together. And within three days, Rebecca was, well, you didn't want to, you wanted to say, watch out for volunteers. You made a little sort of big swear. Everybody's gonna be after us. Sixty-five, Rebecca was sixty-two. They'll see you fresh meat.
That's exactly how we see it, correct?
So, but, we made some agreement, and three days later, it came up. So, as many people know, she's had serious challenges, because she still lives in that, or she lives along this. So, my commitment in retirement was really to support her. So, that seemed like the right thing at that moment. And she has made amazing progress in being independent. She walked here tonight from the school district to meet me at this meeting, which is amazing. But, it's great. So, yeah, I realized that we need to commit to time, to further.
Anything else? All right. If you could send Chris in, that would be great. And feel free to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again?
What, you lead off the last one? Stephanie, you get to lead off.
I will lead off.
All right. Good evening.
All right, I get to lead off. I am very interested in serving as a councillor.
I've asked the same question three times.
Have you really?
I've been around.
Yeah, I don't have those randomly out there.
What is your understanding of the role of a councillor, and what has prepared you to be one?
Well, as a city councillor, be part of the team. So, this is the needs of me, as a city councillor. I wish you may work with the city employees to try to lead things.
Okay, well, it's fine.
I believe the city councillor should be as part of the justice balance, as in set rules to finish the project. I've been coach here for over fifteen years. During the time, I've learned that I have a problem to resolve in the same way. You have to look at these problems, you're flexible enough to figure it out.
Will you share with us your assessment of any recent decisions that have been done?
I've been listening to the city council and some of the recent decisions. I'd really like to see it incorporate a lot of our property, make it more attractive, and build businesses.
All right, Patrick?
What do you feel is the most critical issue we see in the city if we were?
At this current time, I think the most critical issues are higher-than-life city manager, city insurance problems, poverty, certain problems, providing leadership is critical. Other issues are sustainable funding, affordable housing, and public health issues.
All right, as I said, there's one off-script question. The position was announced about a month and a half ago or so, to pass some city council meetings. It's said, and you haven't seen in the audience, it goes, and just wondering, just wondering why. Not that it was required, but.
Nice, you're online. I wonder if any of you are.
Yeah, yeah, very good, okay. All right, councillors, that wraps up our set questions. Anything else you would like to ask of folks?
I would, I would just ask if any of them have questions for us.
Yep, any questions, anyone?
One phone.
What's that?
It looks like some people.
Okay, yes, please.
I'm curious about zones. I have the feeling, I don't know if it's a full experience of zones, but it kind of reminds me of the old days when there was people that dug the side of the tracks, and there was people that dug the hill. But you had zones, and brought those together to represent. But the way I've seen Lumber grow is, you were there, and people who snowed. So, is a zone what it used to be? Do, how do they work? I understand that school work, it's very expensive. How would your someone's work, you say, in your zone?
So, originally, when the charter was written, there were no zones. And then, what happened was, they realized we were getting faults of people from one area, and other parts of the neighborhoods weren't represented. So, what they do is, every time there's a census, the zones get changed based on population. So, that's how that gets changed, and stays fair.
Fire away.
When you make decisions, I've been involved, observed at school. When there are decisions to be made, and board votes, and sometimes it's unanimous, it's obvious. Sometimes there's a few that don't, since it's a, for some of the, aren't. What happens, what they, what I saw them saying is that they will then all agree as people, one voice, that this is not allowed. Does that happen here too? You know, what happens if there's disagreement?
Anybody want to take this one? I'll take it. All right, so, when, when we vote as a council, we are voting as this body. So, so that is the representation of the city. That's regardless of what our individual view is on that particular item. It is still that the city's policy then is, or whatever the action that the council has taken is, is what the city positions. All right, thank you. Right, come on up, Meryl.
My questions are a little bit more broad. But, I've been with you, but I am curious. What are some challenges you all as councillors, together or individually, have met or have faced in the, your goals as a, as a councillor? And then, kind of on that note, what are some of the highlights you guys had in serving as a councillor?
Who wants to take that?
In a short amount of time.
There you go, there you go. Patrick, how's about you?
I am more, I think, fiscally, well, I try to be more fiscally conservative than some. And I am, yeah, exactly. And I'm more of kind of a bricks and mortar guy. I can't touch it or feel it, I'm, you know, kind of, whoa. And some of the frustration, so, for me, some of the frustrations have been the budget process and how that's gone. I think this year, we made gains, and I know staff made it, but I kind of liked having each department head come and say what their aspirations were. So, that way, we could know where we are, where they are as leaders, and where they want to take their departments. And so, I felt that was really helpful for me to understand a bigger picture. Some of the frustrations, quite honestly, have been on Facebook recently. And the fact that when you have personnel matters, and there are legal and financial consequences attached to anything this group says publicly. And so, while folks can throw rocks and be critical, they don't have all the information, which, and we're kind of in this catch-22, we would love to share, but we also want to respect people who may or may not have done something wrong, or, you know, we want to respect the process, so we don't create more problems for the city. And that's, that's a huge frustration for me, as somebody who's in public relations. You know, I'm constantly wanting to send a press release, or get on Facebook, or have coffee with people. And sometimes that just flat isn't it, until investigations are done on that, until we get some direction from insurance companies, lawyers, and everything else. So, that's been my impression.
What else?
I've been here a while. I think the biggest thing is, I learned a lot. What I thought I was going into doing is not what I ended up doing. Because you have to learn how to work with other people, and you have to learn what really is our job. So, but, but what I'm going to say next. But, if there's things you really care about, that aren't really city business, you find ways, because you have contacts now, that you can work with. Like, I was really super interested in the homeless issue, and I became freezing to death in the winter time. So, I was able, not because of my job, but with my job, and the contacts that I've made, I was able to make the connections, help solve that problem, help solve that problem. So, but I'll tell you, that my mind has changed a lot more since being here and actually seeing the consequences of our actions. And it's, and it's changed me. So, for, for good or bad, I guess. And, and you'll never get out of Fred Meyer.
That's true. Don't go in your pajamas.
Just to comment on this, my, my neighbor, I know, never was a plant. He's like, so I found out that you're a plant, you know, and I'm like, okay, so it begins, since I'm not even a plant.
I would say, for me, one of the challenges for me personally is the way that I make decisions, is I tend to be a process person. And the way I do that is talking with other people, and sort of doing a feedback loop. And that's not necessarily something that we can do because of public meetings laws. So, I can't necessarily spend a lot of time outside of these meetings, processing with someone else who has done this work and sort of understands the benefits of it. And so, that for me is a challenge, because I tend to come to my better conclusions by being able to have longer conversations. And, and it's good, because it lends itself to transparency, because the conversations we have with each other are here, and people can witness those. But it also is hard for me personally, because I tend to be someone who likes to process with someone else. So, that's, that's been a challenge for me.
Any other questions, folks? All right, seeing none. All right, folks, now comes the tough part, right? So, why don't we take a minute or two, and try to score five through one, five being the highest one, and we'll see where we stand at that point.
Can I get a brief one on Meryl's answer?
Sure. In fact, Meryl, why don't you come up, if that's okay, and give us a quick synopsis.
Just real fast.
I'd love to answer the questions, man. Sorry.
All right. Okay, why are we interested in serving?
We're all written down, anyway.
There you go.
Why am I interested in serving as a city councillor? So, what I said to council, and what I feel is, I grew up in Bradonia, and we raised cattle on a really small farm. And so, I learned a lot there about hard work, and about being the minded residents, and about serving your community, and being neighborly in general. And so, I think it works in a really interesting position, as we envision the next twenty years, how we see ourselves grow, with a lot of the process. And I'd like to raise the voice of others in the process, so that is sort of keep me in their way, really quick. Should I keep going?
What, what is your understanding of the role of a public?
So, my understanding of the role of councillor, and of officials, you guys are the personal voice of the residents, the community, and organizations, in some of the broader future. Things like goal setting, vision of agendas, but also in some of the more specific details of the policy, including signing policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Share with us your assessment of any recent decision that's.
Oh, so, now that I talked a little bit about the vision process, and the relationship building initiative, and how we were looking at ways of engaging disengaged youth, and I encourage us to look beyond that, broader that, to do in general. My experience with working in dialogue, and with working with youth here in this community, and across the organ, really, they are very lovely, saying that they have a stake in communities, and in processes and policy. I also spoke a little bit about the examination of the urban growth boundary, and the cost that it will take, two hundred and fifteen, two hundred thousand dollars, and I wonder about the cost effectiveness, while also realizing that we need land for industry, and we need zoning land for, against the residential, so.
And what is the most critical, what's your patience in council?
I feel two ways about that. One, I think, so the other thing I spoke about, which is the selection of the senior manager, I feel like really finding an effective bridge, a person who's a bridge between benefit and council, looking at ways to support the community, and really working on communication. The other thing that I spoke about, what was like, looking at big picture, is really enhancing the opportunities for growth in our community through sustainable development, smart policy, including or ensuring a wider and exclusive access to public services, as well as capacity building, really enhancing the life of residents here in the community.
Thank you, sorry I missed.
The only other question that I was asked, the app was, how, how does she feel she can represent, having been here a year and a half?
Oh, yeah, very good. Yes, so, perhaps, I've thought about that one a little bit more.
Oh, there you go. Okay, otherwise, they can't, they still have chance, they were already supposed to be thought of too. So, there you go.
So, as I remember what I said, essentially, I believe I said that, as a new resident, I have insight into, there's a huge clip of people moving into Lumber. So, I have insights into that group of people, those families, and a way to relate to the newer generations, the newer folk who are moving into the community. Also, just in general, I don't think that you have to be and you learn for a very long time to be able to make personal connections with people, and to build relationships, and to serve your neighbors. And so, in that way, which is a passion of mine, I think I would be an effective representative.
Thank you. All right, now, in the interest of fairness, if Nick, Chris, Jean, or Mike would like to say another word, if he thought of anything else, now would be, now would be the time. You can change any of your answers, maybe, if you're ready. So, all right, all right, so, councillors, and hearing, hearing no more, let's, let's go into, trying to score, if we've got that. And then, I'm going to really put you all on the spot. You have five through one, five being the top person, top.
Do you want to start a queue?
Sure. Yeah, maybe the finance director will be.
Want to do the math?
Because he'll do math for us.
He's going to do the math.
Do the math? I'll do that first. Um, one, which, okay.
So, one.
Or the other way.
Oh, like five is.
Five's high.
Five is high.
Five's high.
Five, wait, five's.
Five's high.
So, you want to push your direction.
We might be, I was going to say.
I'm going to, no, I'm going to. Five's high. Oh, all right, five's high. Five is high. All right. All right. Well, yeah, yeah, we're going to get them all added up.
So, my number one is supposed to be top?
Yes, correct, correct. Do it just to confuse, just to make it confusing.
So, the person with the most points wins.
All right, so. Okay, so, and for the audience, just so you know, so, the application, or this process really was two parts. There was an application first, the candidates, as you might have guessed, were given the questions in advance, except for the unscripted question. And so, we've got an application, now we've had the interview, and now it's the scoring from our finance director. All right, now, councillors, I'm going to put you on the spot, because I think we need the public to know why we are doing what we're doing. So, who wants to lead off by telling us who their top candidate is, and why? Deafening science, deafening.
I don't have my piece of paper.
All right, I'll get it over.
Do it.
So, I was, can I say, born and why I chose them all, because I would have.
Sure, sure.
So, I was between Jean and Meryl. And I chose Jean, because I feel like me and Meryl are really similar. And I'm trying to choose others right now that will broaden the council bench, and, but we scored identically. We both scored seventeen out of twenty on my score sheet. So, I would be super, I really hope that everyone is on a committee, but I hope that Meryl will join the committee. If you're, or, also, you know, if someone could get first.
Do it.
Much, much like my friend Elise, I agree that differences make us better, and I had a tie as well. It was Nick and Jean, and I ended up with Jean as well. Because, because of that, exactly what you said, if we all think the same, we are not fairly representing the citizens of Lumber, because the citizens of Lumber do not all think the same, so.
I can go next. I had a tie between Mike and Meryl, and I ended up choosing Meryl because of the application. It was exhaustive, there were, Meryl's application had another page or two pages with paragraphs, common paragraphs, and Mike's just, just had kind of handwritten, and so I just felt like the thought behind it was just a little bit more with Meryl.
I can go next. So, this was really hard, because I thought all applicants were really good, both applications and the interviews. So, it was, it was really actually pretty tough to rank, because I would have liked separated two, you know, I would have done a whole process. I came down to Meryl as my first, and I actually battled that, sort of like, feeling like similar viewpoints is tough, and I kind of overrode that, because I, you know. But I have to agree with Elizabeth, the detail, or the details in the application stood out for me. But also, something that stands out for me from her is her experience in other places, in terms of education, living other places, sort of a global knowledge of things, which, when we're talking about city business, it's really important to keep things local, but I also think having a good perspective globally, living other places, having education in different places lends itself to sort of a decision-making process that looks a little different, so.
I'm going to be there.
Do it.
So, I had two that were very close, and that was Jean and Nick. And I was keeping in mind that the seat's going to be up for election in twelve months, almost exactly. And that, you know, with, with Jean, he can dip his foot in the water and see if this is a little more than he wants to try. I can speak from a guy who works out of town, and does this, has a family. It, it's work. It is, some weeks, it can be pretty challenging to get through all the materials, and make sure you have the conversations with the people you need to have the conversations with, and still do the outreach. The other weeks, it's fairly light. And so, the way I kind of approached it was, I think with Jean, you could get in here, see if you liked it, and then you had an option of twelve months. I was really impressed that Nick went out and got signatures on the actual city council petition to put his name on the ballot, and so I think he's got a great start for the election. But that also is kind of double-edged sword, because I don't want to give somebody a leg out from there, just, you know, I don't want to select somebody just because I think they're in a way after the election. So, for me, that's, that's how I voted. All the candidates are great.
Yeah, yeah, and again, thank you all, all five of you, we are very, very fortunate. I'm saying right now. You know, like Patrick, mine came down to Nick and Jean. And again, as been mentioned here, I think part of that is. here, I think part of that is driven by the desire to have different voices on the council. I think, and ultimately, I did, I think I voted for Jean, because I think of some of his life experiences, he mentioned in his applications of different living situations, you know, he mentioned his wife and what that means in his life, and I think that that's, you know, the entire question of accessibility is something hugely important, so, there's, there, how I vote, but again, tough, tough, tough decision, and thank you all. How are we looking over there, finance director?
Do you want a name?
Oh, sure, yep.
This is a one for a bullet, right? No, it's right, is it ranked, Kelly?
Yeah, it should be, right.
So, there's no, but if there's top candidate, we won't worry about that.
That's right. You have a clear top candidate of Jean Parros?
All right, all right, Jean, congratulations, potential convocation. So, at the, during the business session, we'll officially, we'll make the official announcement, and then, as I mentioned, we'll swear you in two weeks from today, so, unless anybody else has anything else, again, to all the candidates, thank you so very much, and we hope, you know, Don Karen hopes to hear from you about any city committees, of which we're always looking for people, so, thank you very much, we'll reconvene at seven o'clock with the business session. Before we call the meeting to order, it's great to see you all, it is, we, oddly enough, we don't get this kind of attendance at all of our city council meetings, but you are welcome to come to every one, and thank you for being here at the Newburgh Finance, and thank you for the folks from the union and all the rest of the audience. So, let's call this meeting to order, roll call, please, soon.
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted, with the exception of District Five, the position is currently vacant.
Yep, all right, pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the Five, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, all right, item four on our agenda, the presentations, so this is my, my honor to be able to read this proclamation, a proclamation recognizing November four, 2019, a Small Business Saturday, November two, anyway, whereas the government of Newburgh Oregon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty point seven million small businesses in the United States, they represent ninety-nine point seven percent of all firms who pay employees in the United States, are responsible for sixty-four point nine percent of net new jobs created from two thousand to two thousand eighteen, and whereas small businesses employ forty-seven point three percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas ninety-six percent of consumers plan to shop on Small Business Saturday, said the day inspires them to go to small, independently owned retailers or restaurants that they have not been to before or would not have otherwise tried, and whereas ninety-two percent of companies planning promotions on Small Business Saturday said the day helps their business stand out during the busy, busy holiday shopping season, and whereas fifty-eight percent of small business owners said Small Business Saturday contributes significantly to their holiday sales each year, and whereas Newburgh, Oregon supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore it is proclaimed by the mayor and city council and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Newburgh, Oregon, that we proclaim November thirtieth, 2019, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. All right, and I'd like to present this to Chamber President or Executive Director, Shannon Buckner. Very good. Thank you, Shannon, thank you for all your good words. All right, let's see, City Manager's report, please, item five.
All right, just a few things to catch you up on, one, the recruiting process, we are now three weeks out from the first cutoff date of November twenty-four, we have received around, I believe, fourteen applications at this point, nine, half of which are from in-state, half are out-of-state, so that's an interesting mix so far, and it's a pretty good response, so it's a, it's a good indication that there's a lot of interest in this community, working in this community, and I think a few of the ones that I've seen are really strong candidates, so, I think you'll have a nice pool to choose from, and some tough choices to make when the day comes. Reminder that, again, the interviews are the community interviews, you know, the community get-together, not necessarily interview, but community get-together with candidates will be on December fifteenth, Sunday, the exact time and location to be announced, we think will be in the cultural center, but we're still firming up our plans for, for all of that. The sixteenth will be the actual interview dates with several panels, and then the council will have their regular meeting on that evening to consider whether they're prepared to make an offer to any, to a top candidate. That's where we stay on that recruitment process, Shannon. We are currently recruiting, per conversations that I've had with you, of a, sort of a DEI professional, or sort of a mix of DEI professional, library professional, the individual will be housed at the library, have their office space there, be roughly fifty percent library and fifty percent community engagement, the person will be liaison with, with community and offices there, that will begin working on the twelfth, November twelfth, so coming up shortly, so that will be somebody that will provide outreach to the local community and to, to the, to the local, so hopefully we'll be, we'll be, the, that recruiting will be happening in short order, and I think the notice is out already. Some good news, we have received the other portion of the grant funding from BGE towards our solar panel bank, we now have a hundred fifty thousand dollars from BGE, BGE, they've, I think they beat us to the punch on the publicity, but we are now four hundred thousand to the good on that project, which puts us about halfway there, it's balanced, and our own coffers, whereas we have a new plan. That will, work on that will begin soon in terms of the planning work, doing the, getting the planning process, I want to have full funding in place, both in the city and our grant wars, after the beginning of the fiscal year. And finally, in response to the folks that have diligently showed up at our growers for a couple meetings now with their, with their signage and their interest, we answer your, 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 I forget what I called it.
Issue tracker.
Issue tracker, we have, in fact, joined the organization, the national organization, they've asked us to be, I don't know what it's called, but they joined it, ICL, EIU, for sustainability solutions, and get us on, beginning of that process, we're together with that volunteer group, that is, you know, getting a good deal of publicity and deservedly so, so I know the mayor, and I've talked about this a lot, and I know there was a particular interest in this, this council, so, we are pursuing that, and so that's what I have to explain.
Any questions? All right, moving on to item six A, a council appointment, you all have seen the recommendation for, for in this case Citizens' Rate Review Committee, any comments or commotion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we consent to your appointment of Maria Maxwell, Mary Maxwell, sorry, three, I was reading the first time, where it lasts, to the Newburgh Citizens' Rate Review Committee for the term effective November four, 2019, to the public, excuse me.
Liz be second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, Marie Maxwell, welcome to the Citizens' Rate Review Committee.
Thank you.
All right, and then, now, for District Five, which was the subject of our work session, the, I think the motion needs to be amended because of its... Yeah, because, because of the date of swearing in, so that, the date of swearing in will actually be two weeks from today, but, could I get a motion to that effect?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Jean Parros to fill the District Five seat on Newburgh City Council with the amendment the mayor has proposed.
Stephanie, second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, Jean, welcome to the city council, thank you. All right, before we start into public comments, item number seven, Denise, you have a comment?
Yeah, since we never have so many of you in the room, I was at a meeting on Saturday night, I was wearing a Newburgh, an old, just Newburgh Police Department sweatshirt, and a man comes up to me and he said, "Do you work for them?", and I said, "No, but I'm the president of their foundation", and he said, "Well, thank you very much, because I was on the grand jury, and this, your organization is the most professional, organized police force out there, so, thank you".
All right, now, moving into, to public comments, as I mentioned, you'll each have five minutes, and we'll open there, starting with the question of sidewalks, Caitlin Carplus, please state your name and speak into the microphone.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Carplus, thank you for providing a chance for me to speak today, I, one of those, a, a, attention, I work at a clinic, Virginia Garcia Clinic in Newburgh, and there's a section of road just west of the clinic that has a sidewalk, about fifty to sixty, yeah, I have an overhead view of that very small section, it's a city lady that has a sidewalk, as you probably know, Virginia Garcia Clinic serves a diverse population, a lot of people with Medicaid insurance, a lot of people who are underrepresented among public resources, a lot of people in wheelchairs, who don't have cars, who are walking in the clinic, and it's very challenging and actually life, walking on a uneven, often muddy side of the grass or on the road itself, it doesn't seem like it could be a very busy road, but it really is, it's usually a little pro and dark and complex there, and there's cars there all the time, in our complex, there's our clinic, there's also the National Health, which is pretty much the same population, a lot of people with low grade resources, a lot of people not tracking, and then right next to them is WIC, which is for women with children, serving pregnant women and families, which is under five, a lot of people with school, there are some people with young children, single parents trying to navigate that area, and again, wrestling, there's a care clinic for their outpatient consultants, and their counselors, and their primary, or doctors, without, without a safe way to get there, that area is kind of odd, there's no crosswalks anywhere, so there's not a way for them to cross the street safely and then come back, so there is a sidewalk, and, yeah, it's a very small area, making it a lot safer to have a sidewalk there, thank you very much, your time.
Thank you, thank you for your time. And then for everyone in the audience, what we do in these comments generally is, they go into what we call issue tracker, so it will appear on the agenda, and as we seek to resolve whatever is brought up, it'll appear then, so, okay, thank you so much. All right, let's see, Joseph Falby, on the subject of organization of IT and public works engineering, good evening, sir.
Hi, I think, well, certainly, I am a member of the Newburgh IT department, I'm also a resident of Newburgh, so I, I'm, I was the one who was expected to come up and kind of talk about this, we've, we've been, the IT and engineering departments have been trying to organize since about April, we actually signed our cards in April, we had an initial negotiation session that worked really well, and we thought we'd met some really good points, but since then, the entire process has really kind of stalled, we're not, we're not really, we just want the process to continue, it's, it's not an issue with anybody, it's not, we don't think it's an issue with, with the negotiations, it's, it's just that it feels like it's sort of reached the stalemate and we're, we're not progressing as we would like to, we just want a little bit more back and forth, and the hope is that, that there's something that you guys can do as the city council to sort of encourage that communication, to bolster that, the rise of communication, that's, that's really all we're looking for, you know, we don't, we're not asking for anything outrageous, we're, we're just trying to make sure that, that we're as protected as we can going forward, and that's, that's really all, all any of us in the audience have to say, I will say I, I love the PD here, and I'm a big supporter of the police department too, I mean, ask them for conversation. That's really all I have to say, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you. All right, let's see, and I think some of these have somewhat of the same topic, so I'll just randomly start, how's about Mark Colby, on the subject of the patent case?
I'd like to yield my time to Mike, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mike, are you ready then?
I'm ready.
All right.
I used to appear before this council when I was an attorney, and my name is Michael Dunn, my office is Bill Box, one substitute Dundee, and the reason I'm here is because I, I got interested in this patent case, and all the aftermath, the happenstance of it, and I know you, you people in the civil council, I've been on boards before, et cetera, nobody appreciates what happens in the industry, there's, there's a lot of disappreciation about what you do, et cetera, but, having said that, you guys have a job, okay, and let me just say, I'll cut to the chase, okay, I don't think you've been getting the right advice, or if you haven't been getting the right advice, you haven't been acting on it, I don't like to see a waste of a taxpayer's money, I think the city of Newburgh is wasting a taxpayer's money on this patent case, with everything that's happened, subsequent to that, and I don't like to see conduct to occur, sub, associate, in this case, and subsequent, now, I practiced law for only five years, I tried to hold myself, I was a very honest guy, practiced law, I tried a lot of cases, I don't know how many you read my op-ed and draft about three or four weeks ago, I attended part of that patent trial, and I, I want to tell you, I was abhorred, astonished at the allegations as to what happened, that certain city employees did, as far as obstruction of evidence, as far as tampering with evidence, as far as telling the IT person not to preserve evidence, now, these are allegations, if they're true, let me tell you, if I was on the city council, I'd want to know what the hell is going on, is there a pardon, right, and I haven't seen any of that, now, I don't presuppose, I don't sit on one, but obviously the executive section, et cetera, though I like to think of myself when I try cases, I could smell a case when something didn't make sense, and I can tell you, I, I've seen a lot of documents on this case, and a lot of stuff doesn't make sense on this case, and you guys ought to be asking, what is going on in this case? And anybody that sits here and tells you as far as an attorney or an advisor, that the city did nothing wrong, the city has no problems, et cetera, is not being straight to you, now, I don't have any action line, okay, I live in Dundee, I get police protection, I like, I happen to take the police department as a number one, but I want to tell you, I'm telling you straight, okay, you guys have got some serious legal issues in this case, if I was an attorney representing some of the people in this case, that would be, I won't say agreed and approved, but I, I, let me tell you, I could win this case against the city, cases against the city, and I, I want to tell you, at least nine out of twelve jury did not believe no witnesses in this trial, period, and when the jury comes back in ninety minutes on a case of this magnitude, when there's allegations of mist, of tampering with evidence, et cetera, I want to tell you, right... I want to tell you, right now, they don't believe the witnesses, period. The HR director, I don't know if the city attorney testified, but they didn't believe him in the case, so, bottom line. Now, here's, here's what happened subsequent to this, and we always hear about, you know, this is not a cover-up, a cover-up works in fun, okay? There was an alleged burglary of the HR director's office by Annalee, alleged that there was a burglary. Coincidentally, very soon thereafter, I think it was a day after there was a preservation, a request for a public record request and a preservation order, okay? Now, that's very coincidental. Now, if you're, you're an HR director and your office is supposedly burglarizing the City of Newburg, who's the first person you're going to tell? The police. I mean, that's only common sense. Who is she telling? The city attorney. I've known Mr. Stone for a long time, okay? And I, let's just say, Mr. Stone, I think his feelings in this case are not enough enough. So, what happens after that? Mr. Stone and this police sit on this thing for two or three months before they say anything to anybody other than the maintenance guy to change the lock. Do they tell the police? No, okay? Now, you people all have a lot of common sense, that obviously smells, okay? And you're lucky that never came out of trial, because the city attorney fought longer, the attorney representing you fought long and hard and, I would say, Mr. Wrightell, I got to give him a lot of credit, he won this case, and I would have not acquiesced on that. But at any rate, here's the situation. You got a burglary of an office of a city employee, you want that investigated immediately, okay? There's none of that going on, the police weren't even aware of it. When the police finally become aware of it, there's no cooperation by any of the city. Basically, what I, I want to ask you, how many of you people have read the OSB report? It's almost thirty pages long, as far as this investigation. Well, you ought to be shocked, you ought to be outraged, you ought to be mad, you ought to want to know what is going on in this case, okay? Because, in that OSB report, there's a bunch of stone walling by the city employees in there. They hide behind attorney-client privilege. How many of you have ever heard of attorney-client privilege? Attorney-client privilege means anything that an attorney tells you in a court it's representing you is true. But I will, I will be here to say that attorney-client privilege does not, cannot be used to perpetuate a law, okay? And if you've got somebody that alleges a burglary of a city office, and the OSB comes in to investigate because allegedly, some city employee said that Ryan Casey was the one that, that, uh... This is all in the OSB report, that Ryan Casey is the one that did the burglary, which is absurd on his face, and it's defamatory on his face. Wouldn't you want this case solved? Are you going to say, "I'm not going to block right here with you because of attorney-client privilege"? Read the memo from Brad Barry in there. He says, "Hey, we couldn't, the OSB couldn't investigate because of this attorney-client privilege." I'm just telling you that, and I have to speed up, because obviously my time is running. But I want to tell you, you know, if I were in your place, the first thing I want to know is, "What is going on in this case?" I would be, and I'm not trying to cast this version at the interim city manager. The interim city manager, according as far as not hiring part of the courts, okay? That's, that's the purview of the council. But I want to tell you, in the real world, something like this happens, now they're a private place, some heads are going to rule it, okay? If you've got somebody that costs the city four hundred thousand bucks, whether your insurance company pays it or not, is a moot point, okay? And I would, you know, you ought to be investigating what's going on in there. So what happens, okay? Three individuals that are doing their job, Dave Brooks, Ryan Casey, and Jeff Cosmiki get complaints filed against them for doing their job. The city, do any of you have any idea how much money the city spent on investigating them for doing their job? Well, there's invoices that have been paid, I don't know how many unpaid invoices there are. There's invoices that have been paid for twenty-six thousand bucks, of the city's money, for investigating these three individuals. Have you guys investigated the people that started this, i.e. Annalee and the city attorney? I mean, these, these three individuals, Brooks and Casey and Cosmiki, they didn't invent this burglary on their own. They didn't do anything other than their job. So I'm here to say that you guys are in a world of hurt, you need to cut your losses. This case should have been settled long ago. When I tried cases, and I had a case with these facts against me, or I had alleged tampering with evidence, et cetera, the first thing I'd want to do is try to settle that case as fast as I could, because let me tell you, the jury is not going to believe your witnesses, and once they don't believe your witnesses, it's all over. And now you have a real morass in this case, because you've got three people, Cosmiki, Casey, and Brooks, who have got potential lawsuits against you. I would be, I would take those cases in a heartbeat if I was practicing law anymore. And, and I'm not trying to presuppose you have past disversions, but I've seen zero out of the City Council as far as wanting to know what the hell is going on in this situation. And, you know, your duty is to represent the citizens of Newburg, not to cover the city employees' wrongdoing. So, the other thing I want, but the last thing I want to say is, I hope the city attorney, and I've done treatment for a long time, I hope the city attorney's not advising you on this situation, because he's up to his eyeballs in a conflict situation. He's a fact witness. Who do you think the neighbor's dependent if these people file lawsuits? The city attorney, Annalee, who knows how many other people with the city? And the city is obviously vicarious to libel. Are any of you aware that if different factors, a burglary on that office of hers, that the state statute requires that the city notify all the employees that there's been a criminal damage, et cetera, on that? Now, I know if that's been done. You've got tremendous liability if that hasn't been done. So, I've talked long enough. You can see I'm very passionate about this case. I've had practice law for eleven years, but I don't like wrongdoing until I see, put it that way. And I always try to keep my morals high and my honesty high. I've talked enough. How many people back here agree with me? Stand up.
All right, Mr. Gunn, thank you for your comments. As mentioned earlier, when these are brought to us, it does appear on issue tracker. And for the audience, I can just assure you that the City Council takes it with the utmost seriousness. As Patrick mentioned earlier in the evening, there are issues of both liability, legal issues, and the human resource issues, but I assure you, we take it very seriously. Okay, moving right along, let's see. Brad Dickerson, support for the Police Department Administration.
Mr. Dickerson can make some statements, but I would recommend that you be to speak first.
Okay, great, sure.
I'm Joey Banks, an officer of the Department of Public Safety. Anybody here hear me okay? I'm here on behalf of the Newburg Dundee Public Safety Association, and here in support of the Newburg Dundee base administration. Citizens of Newburg, the Newburg Dundee Public Safety Association have become aware of some disturbing allegations and information that service that person is in location, involving the city of Newburg. Here, we're at the somehow credibility of our chief police, Ryan Casey, police captain Jeff Cosmiki, as it's called in question. As law enforcement officers and people who work for a law enforcement organization, we understand that any accusation of wrongdoing is serious, especially when credibility is probably in question. Credibility is our livelihood. It reflects almost everything we do, and it's helped to get the highest level of improvement. All of us in city government understand the unique role we play in the eyes of community, and how negative news and comments could really come to the headline every day, without any time spent arguing the facts, or restoring the problem, or fact-finding the case. T case is born, somehow spreading good news has become a news worthy. Negativity is what grabs attention these days, and it's divisive, and it's tiresome, and it's hostile. We're submitting this document to the Newburg City Council to show our whole support for Chief Casey and Captain Cosmiki. They have fostered an environment for Newburg Dundee to perform for inclusive, proactive, progressive, and enjoyable. Many of us have purposefully left other agencies that are plagued with negativity, lower get-together, and no connection to the community. The native culture does not exist here, and it's not because of our leadership, it's taken. But rather because we're encouraged to do our work while always being reminded of our core, which is the citizens of this community. The message from our chief and captain has always been very clear, as long as we're trying to do the right thing, through support, support with time to work on beneficial projects, develop relationships, support with training equipment, support with positive messages, and encouragement. That support has a direct impact on our morality as a organization, because it gets our employees to find it a full mission. Happy-go-vin employees who are not just showing up in collective nature, but are there because they truly enjoy helping people. We have an active police agency that's developed, with a necessary vice response team, and well-helping, a school resource program, who not only officers who devote time off, we have a specialized law enforcement portion, Jock with a cop, and Sid with a cop, without an encouraging or requirement. We have willing and motivated employees. We're committed to our ongoing outreach programs such as Hispanic Outreach for Honduras, the Suicide Awareness Campaign, support charitable foundations, school functions, daily interactions with our community through our social media programs. Our leadership has altered the working environment, makes our officers want to perform higher tasks to serve our citizens. Our department is made of people who have either grown up in this community as an officer, or from people who have no connection to the city, but are kind of appreciative of it now. We have officers who work for the local state police, from the Mutine Police Department, Black East County Sheriff's Office, Salem Police Department, Roseboro Police Department, Lincoln City Police Department, Mountain Hill Police Department, Silver King Police Department, the New York County Sheriff's Office, who have chosen to come and work for the Newburg Dundee Police Department. Every police agency in Central Midwest is hired a police officer, or simply can't get enough out against their fellow positions. Yet to be here today are holy staff, holy staff. There's a special thing happening at this agency, it's rare, and our community deserves to share it down this road. Chief Casey and Captain Cosmiki have assembled a great team of police employees from here, who are proud of them, and are supportive of the leadership. We hope their community and our city council are proud of us too. We ask this message to be heard and considered, decisions about city leadership are very important, and that's us. Finally, all of us at the Newburg Dundee Police Department are service at any time. If you're going to reach out to any of us, come out on the ride line, meet us individually. We'd like to get to know you. Ask us about our experience working with this agency and others. We have a diverse group of employees with different backgrounds, with different strengths. The bottom of the common goal of growing an exceptional police department, and we want to maintain it, of course. I know recently our chief had his retirement announced to us, so he had mentioned us, do you like us? And I feel bad that I didn't come for him. But if you want to say that the time ticking down on the retirement of Chief Casey was a personal statement for me, and I have my full support, and I see him as the heart of this town, is he's a senior, and he is the day-day operation to us right now. I just urge you guys to consider it, hopefully, seriously. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Patrick Wilson, I'm a police officer for the Newburg Dundee Police Department. I'd like to say a few words tonight about my feelings of support for the Newburg Dundee Police Department, and specifically Chief Casey and Captain Cosmiki. I've had many careers before coming to the Newburg Dundee Police Department. The first I was as an officer in the United States Air Force. The basic operation and purpose was by which I lived my life, was integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all. I left the Air Force honorably as a captain and joined the target organization. I was able to lead teams in the law dimension, human resources, and ultimately, as far as children. I left Target after twelve years. I remember specifically, one question Chief Casey asked, "Have you applied to other agencies?" I replied, "Only yours." I had done my research on other agencies, and this agency was specific, but it was only one of their choices. After three years, I can say, this is still the best decision I made. I've lived from all aspects of management. I wish I could say I could do it better, but that wouldn't be true. Chief Casey and Captain Cosmiki need support and inspire us all. Their leadership remains among all of the staff in the Newburg Police Department, while I'm tuned here from other agencies, how famous they are for the Newburg Dundee Police Department. This is my support of Chief Casey, Captain Cosmiki, two leaders who assume integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all.
All right, Rebecca Wallace, please.
So, I've been here before, and I talked about some things last, City Council meeting in Newburg, from my gun today, and some of our fine officers. And I think it would be helpful if there could be some communication from the city to the community citizens to interpret exactly what the charter means when it talks about the pro-ten manager and having the right, not, not having the right to hire and fire city staff, and how that has to be handled by the City Council when there's a pro-ten manager. It needs to be explained in a clearer way than what normal, everyday citizens can interpret from the city charter, because it seems that, over the past few months, there's been a lot of discussion from the pro-ten manager to the council about what you can and cannot do, and who you can and cannot represent. And that is providing some very confused messages to the community. And it needs to be more crystal clear about what your job is, and what his job is, and where the buck stops. So that way, we as a community know who's held responsible. Who do we talk to about situations where taxpayers' money gets spent egregiously? Who, who is it that we come to and say, "Well, is it you guys?" And we hear, "No, no, it's not them, it's, it's him." And then, and then it's, "No, no, it's not him, it's, it's the city council." Well, who is it? If we, if we take the time to put our vote in, because that's such a serious and amazing right that we have to vote for a council person to represent our districts, why does it feel like our vote doesn't matter? Why does it feel like our voices are not being heard, and that they don't count? It's not okay. We need to feel like, we need to feel like we're being taken care of, and we also need to feel like we're being heard as well. And I also would like to say that I, you know, full disclosure, my husband is a police department reserve here. He's a sergeant in the Newburg Dundee Police Department. And I'm very proud of him, and I'm proud of this department, and we do things here that other departments don't do. We have community services, we care about ethnicity in this town, we take it very seriously. We have a community car, suicide car that got put out. We have this brand-new program where it's like, "Be my friend." Those are things that aren't going to happen in other police departments. We care, and it's shown over and over and over again, how much our department is to us. And this is such an insult, and it's not going to be faced, to have city employees who make these... I guess, there's hardly any words for it, for having our chief police and our captain. And one of our, our IT director is also a reserve sergeant in the, in the police department. All of that feels like an assault on our police department, and it's not okay. And me, you guys, will step up and say, "What, what exactly is it? What are you responsible for, and what is he responsible for?" Because as I read the charter, as a normal person, it tells me that you make the final say in hiring and firing city staff, like head directors. You make the final say. How in the world can you make the final say if you're not a prize of city business? Is it possible to make a decision on hiring someone or firing someone if you don't know who they are? If you don't know their actions? If you don't know their reputation or their references? Can you do that? I don't think so. So there's some, there's some verbiage in the city charter that needs to be explained to the city community members, so that we may understand what we hold you accountable for, and what we come to you to hold them accountable for, because they are your employees. They're yours. We have to do that. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I think that, can everybody hear me? Hopefully, no microphones. First up, thank you all for being here. And what I can say is that, yes, the city is going through a difficult period of time. We never want to see, as was mentioned by Mr. Dunn, we never want to see our city in a sentence in the Oregonian with the word discrimination and Newburgh in the same headline. Believe me, I can tell you, ten months ago when I started this job, I did not think that this is what it would be. I think all of us here collectively are very concerned with all, as I said earlier, that is going on, and if we, I think collectively, could make a way for this to be the very best place to work in the entire state, in the entire region, that's what we would want to see. Okay? You know, we know the dedication that the city employees provide day to day, and I hope you truly understand that, and as residents that we do, we take this with utmost seriousness. And yes, when people's reputations or allegations are being made, we do look into it, and we have been apprised of most of what has been mentioned this evening. But I've also learned, unlike my normal line of work, that there is a larger process in the government affairs than in other private businesses. So that is a part of it. This ship does not turn on a dime, and that's not an excuse, it's just the way it is, and you wouldn't want it to turn on a dime, honestly. But for all of you officers, for the members of the, of the union in IT and engineering that came out tonight, and the members of the public, thank you. Please know, I think I speak for the rest of the council, that we understand the utmost seriousness of this, and if you can help in one way, that would be to really think strong about the city manager position that we're seeking to hire. Okay? It's vitally important, again, they are the CEO of this operation, we're the board of directors, and that's higher is incredibly important, and we're in the midst of it right now. So, thank you. Now, we'll get back to the rest of the business. So, thank you, thank you for being here. All right, why don't we take a five-minute break, and we'll be back in, well, this session back into order. Item eight, consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We approve the consent calendar.
All right, do I hear a second? Second, at least with a second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the red, the consent calendar passes. Item number nine A, this is an administrative public hearing for which I get to read a script. And here comes the call. All right, the administrative hearing is now in order, and the subject authorizing the city manager to waive competitive solicitation requirements for advanced metering infrastructure system from Ferguson Enterprises. All right, any conflicts of interest or abstentions, folks? Hearing none, all right, Karen, good evening.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. But let's begin with the chair's section of the record. I'm going to try and go through this quickly because it's all in the staff report, but I do need to mention several things because it is adhering. So, as we talked about at the last council meeting, the time before that, the advanced metering infrastructure is an integrated system of smart meters, communications networks, and data management systems that allows for two-way communication between the city and the customer. The benefits to it include giving customers expanded control, increased flexibility, additional choices in how they manage their water usage and efficiency. It also gives them access to water usage and cost, and monthly, daily, and hourly usage through their online customer support. I think everybody will need to, to that, so just look at that. Real-time data, these customers are not surprised by their own results. It also allows customers to analyze usage patterns and identify clauses that require or no, no monthly goals, and allows the city to find preferred with quick availability for a problem and get that fixed in a more timely manner. So hit that, the new, Newburgh municipal code addresses purchasing and contracting requirements including the special solicitation method, exemptions for local duty budgets, and use of branding special occasions. NMC three dot two five dot one hundred says that specifications shall not expressly or implicitly require any product by one branding or mark or the product of one particular manufacturer seller, except for the following reasons. And the two in particular are that, that the specification of a product would result in substantial cost savings to the city, and that it's an efficient utilization of existing equipment, systems, or supplies required as an acquisition of compatible equipment supplies. So the census system is both branding, that's actually current meters that we use today. The other system that we use requires to change out all of the existing meters that we have to make them readable with other system. And also, it would also require that we change out our vehicle-based reading equipment, mapping software that we already have, handheld reader programmer that we already have, and manual handheld readers would be useless if we went to another system. So there's substantial cost savings for us to stay with census. And the, the one thing to note is that the older reading equipment can continue to read the new meters until the new system is operational, so we can, we can utilize both the drive-around system and fix base at the same time with the meters and equipment that we have. So it meets those requirements. The basis of approval is based on the nature of contract, classic contracts, and this is a water, construction, repair, replacement. Estimated contract price for a costly project is, case one, is estimated to be approximately three hundred fifty thousand, with an estimated total budget cost of one point two million dollars, that is already currently built into include the water rates over, the most for the next several years. Already talked about the substantial cost savings, and then that the last, one of the last findings is that it's unlikely to encourage favoritism, and again, the cost savings to utilize the existing equipment from Ferguson Enterprises is unlikely to be realized if you were to go with the differences. The proposed contracting method is approval of the exemption from competitive solicitation to be directed toward following requests on equipment installation to local farm or Ferguson Enterprises. The estimated date of contract only to award design is January one, twenty twenty, and there was a health care posted in the Navy Bureau of Commerce on October twenty-first, which is third part of the end of these twenty-nine, fourteen days prior to this. Based on the above findings, that request would come with a solicitation requirement away from the installation of the advanced metering infrastructure system along with requests for open equipment from Ferguson Enterprises.
So, received any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we have not received any public comments for this item.
So I will close with public testimony. Recommendation from staff, please, Karen.
Mayor, our recommendation is you adopt resolution twenty nineteen dash three six oh four, authorize the city manager to waive the competitive solicitation requirement for an advanced metering system, infrastructure system from Ferguson Enterprises.
All right, discussion?
Nope, but I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number two thousand nineteen dash three six zero four.
Second.
Give us a good second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes. And, all right, now nine B, we're on to an ordinance adopting a new legal description of the city of Newburgh. This is a legislative hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, who is the motion, who is the second?
Motion.
Motion, second.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes. All right, Mr. Rox, good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Rox, good evening, welcome to the record. So, this is a public hearing on our new description of our corporate limits, city limits. I mean, the charter, it requires us both have a date, the new description of the city. This is the third time we brought it forward to you. I think we've mentioned before, as we gave to a civil rights case that we have opted out, so we keep it in progress on a regular basis. We only had one annotation approved, of course, twenty nineteen, that was an annotation down on the River Street, yes, to the, your order of mine, as you know. So it's in your package, it's a big legal description that incorporates that annotation and then the respective maps that go along with it. Thank you.
All right, should have, conflicts of interest or abstentions? Can imagine how you would have one, but in case you did, so, no, okay. Public testimony, sir?
Mr. Mayor, we have not received any public testimony for this item.
Okay, thank you. Public testimony is closed. Yes, sir?
I just have a question.
Oh, yeah, no, that was just public testimony. Fire away.
Good, yeah?
Good.
Okay. No lights, you know. This new description will help us with the, well, this, I know we do the river renewal district work, we have to have legal descriptions of the area of the city for the calculations. Will this work apply to that, or is that more robust?
A small portion of this would apply to a potential legal restriction for river renewal there.
Okay, great.
The other side of that is it will be robust if we get to the point where, as I know, by the light of vision, we establish river renewal district, we have to prepare legal descriptions of, we've already got this made possible, okay? Do you have any length of time that we take to start here?
Thanks, bud.
Any other questions? All right, your recommendation, please.
To adopt orders twenty nineteen twenty eight fifty-two.
All right, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We pass ordinance number, oh, wait, this is going to be one of those first reading.
Wave.
Wave the second reading. Can I say that after I make the, yeah, yeah. So I believe we wave the second reading of ordinance number two thousand nineteen twenty eight fifty-two.
Second.
Well, I'll give it to these this time.
Thank you, Sue.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the second reading has been waived, council. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We pass ordinance number two thousand nineteen twenty eight fifty-two.
Second.
Yes, sir. Wait in order.
Yep.
And wave the, or, and read my title over.
Got it, got it.
That's how I modify my motion. Are you okay?
I'm still second.
Okay, good.
Title only?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
All right. Ready to read my title.
Yes, please, please do.
Ordinance number two zero one nine dash two eight five two, an ordinance adopting a new legal description of the Newburgh city limits.
That's it. Okay, any further discussion?
Top of the question.
Question has been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, it passes. All right, moving on to nine C, a new program, ordinance twenty nineteen twenty forty-eight, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation from medium-density residential to industrial, and amending the zoning designation from R two to M two for a property located at five oh two South St. Paul Highway. All right, and this hearing is now open. Abstention, bias, experted contact, and objections of jurisdiction. Hearing none. Mr. Stone.
Certain announcements are required before the commencement of a quasi-judicial land use hearing. This hearing deals with the land use decision of a ordinance amending a comprehensive plan map designation from medium-density residential, MDR, to industrial, IND, and amending the zoning designation from R two, medium-density residential, to M two, industrial, for a property located at five zero two South St. Paul Highway, the Anvil County Tax Lot, R three two two one zero one four zero zero. The announcement required by the Oregon revised statutes, ORS one nine seven point seven six three, is as follows. The applicable stand substantive criteria for the decision are listed in exhibit A to the ordinance titled findings. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the criteria described abo- above, or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which you believe applies to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker or the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue recludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. The applicant who has a burden of proof must have at least seven days after the record is closed to submit final written argument. At the close of the testimony portion of the hearing, the applicant will have to decide if the applicant wishes to submit further written argument. The ORS one nine seven seven six three definitions are as follows. Argument means assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy believed relevant by the proponent to a decision. Argument does not include facts. Evidence means facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or non-compliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. If the applicant wishes to make a submittal, no further deliberation shall take place tonight. If the applicant waives that right, the council may proceed with deliberation. That is the announcement.
You, you shall, and staff, please.
Could you please, you shall, and, and, this is an announcement for the council, and according to the, 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 that, uh, we, uh, and, uh, sure, uh, as you see there, currently, we're at, look, we're creating acres, uh, or, uh, at, we have, uh, that, uh, uh, three acres, uh, and this proposal will come to, uh, so, we have that, uh, plus, uh, at thirty-two acres. And here you will see the, uh, site, um, that, of course, I saw, uh, is where, uh, the, uh, street. So, this, 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 uh, showing the surrounding businesses and, uh, site locations, so it is located in South St. Paul Highway, South Springfield Road, and it's located just north of the, uh, the, uh, for the majority of the surroundings, who are, are raised on, uh, M2, uh, the, uh, there is, uh, there is, uh, global, and, uh, more of a, uh, so, uh. So, that found that the proposal is consistent, state one, pay, old policies, and, uh, in relation to public transportation, uh, membership of public, uh, opportunity to, uh, create public, uh, uh, if necessary, or, uh, public, uh, also, uh, public comment, uh, that, uh, can be, uh, permissioned, uh, and, uh, so, actually. Staff also found that the proposal, uh, is, uh, official use of industrial, uh, stated, uh, is, most of the surrounding type of, uh, industrial, uh, but, uh, had, uh, significant impact on, uh, the, uh, and, there is, uh, a bit of, uh, of public, uh, so. By this time, uh, staff recommends that City Council, uh, have additional information, 2019-2852. Uh, wish, recommends that public, uh, be, uh, and, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, so, uh, so, 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 so.
And for public comments, maybe I've got you signed up, uh, as the, uh, the applicant's spokesperson. So, did you want to address us, or? Okay, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, this council meeting is me and Dukas, someone from KES Engineering, representing the applicant this evening, uh, Representative Harry Bodry. Staff did a good overview of the application, um, sorry if I've got a little bit of repetition, I'll try and, uh, recite that pretty quickly. Staff talked about the overview and site. Essentially, what we're trying to do is go through zone change and comprehensive plan amendment so that, uh, the Bodry, who are working, can expand their existing facility. They're in agreement with the church properties in the north, um, to do that expansion. This is unused land on the south side of the church, uh, where they've got the solar array. Staff talked about the existing plan designations, um, the, the church property itself is kind of unusual in that it carries a residential zoning designation. Churches are conditionally permitted in residential zones, um, but it's not functionally residential land. So, really, what we're talking about are certain locational factors for why this land is appropriate for industrial development rather than residential. Uh, you can see it's adjacent to the, um, developed industrial complex and, um, sitting just south of the church itself. Staff went through the criteria, uh, we have provided the application that shows how we meet the, um, development, uh, the, uh, application criteria. Essentially, it's gotta be consistent with laws and policies for the comprehensive plan. Facilities have to be available, and we have to need transportation planning. You've got many complex policies applying to it, but essentially, this is helping, um, expand existing businesses, small businesses within different city limits. It allows them to stay put into, um, relocating to a different city and, uh, taking care of their industrial lands. Uh, it is served by infrastructure that's documented in the application, including transportation. It's got a standard transportation pattern for those designations, um, but really, it's allowing for the expansion of the business itself. You do have shortage of both industrial land and residential land, um, so you are not, uh, exacerbating a worse situation. You're simply, uh, moving things around. So, the nearest residential land is, functionally residential land is further to the north, on the north side of the church property. So, we've actually got separation between this proposed, uh, change in designation and adjacent residential.
How far is that separation, Troy?
Uh, I don't know offhand, I believe about three hundred feet, staff. And so, we've got the church separating this property from the residential uses. So, it's really, it's not a spot zone based on that, and it is an expansion of the existing complex. Staff mentioned we did have one letter of testimony from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. They testified on every, um, zone change comprehensive plan amendment application that proposes to reduce residential land supply. In this case, it's theoretical land supply, um, for that church property. I don't think the church is going anywhere, um, and so the residual land, so to top residential in the building industrial complex adjacent to a church would be awkward. It's not, it's not realistic for residential land. And staff pointed out in the, um, planning commission hearing that you are incorporating, uh, significant density increase in your, uh, part of planning, but we'll balance that out. So, we think this is a good decision. We're happy to answer any questions. We do appreciate staff's, um, guidance on all this and, uh, you, uh, questions.
Questions? Um, just, I guess, just one question. With the new use, do we anticipate any greater impact on the residential segment?
No, it's, it's separated, and access comes from, um, the existing church driveway. And that's really access just for, uh, trucks. There's the access that goes to the south will remain, um, and that's where the parking field is. So, if people are, are bringing vehicles in, that's the primary spot. So, it's a limited number of industrial trucks that will be used in the parking.
No efficient noise, or that kind of thing, what's the, running?
It's inside the shop, and we do have the separation of the three hundred feet.
All right, uh, did we have any other public comments, Sue?
Mr. Mayor, we did not receive any public comments for this item.
Okay. Uh, what about public agency letters of comments beyond those that were already mentioned?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. All right, we will close the public. Public testimony voids the hearing. Any more announcements, please? Mr. Stone?
If the decision is not made tonight and continued to another date, the record could be reopened at that later date by motion of the council. Therefore, do not assume no further evidence will be taken. If the decision is made tonight, the council has the authority to reconsider the decision following proper procedure. This motion to reconsider is usually required to be made at the next meeting of the city council. The fact that the council could reconsider their decision does not affect the length of time for appeal of that decision. And, Mr. Mayor, we need to ask that the applicant whether they waive the, uh, seven days.
We do.
And if they did waive it.
All right, uh, final comments from staff?
Staff's not managing people, uh, the, uh, because the, uh, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh,
All right, questions of staff?
All that from memory? Wow!
That was impressive.
That was so long ago.
I can't remember my middle name, so.
All right, any, uh, any questions for staff? Uh, discussion, councilors? Why do you know the next thing?
I didn't last ordinance, so I messed this one up.
I will make a motion.
There we go.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 2019-2848 as recommended by, uh, or.
Read, second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, second reading.
That was the best one.
Do we have a second on the way? Okay, Denise with the second.
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of waiving the second reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, the second reading is waived, anyway. All right.
All right.
I know, it's, it's.
I will now move to adopt ordinance number 2019-2848 as recommended by Planning Commission Resolution Number 2019-350. And read by title only.
And we have a sec, Denise with the second. All right, further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Well, wait, you, I knew that.
This one would have been brutal to read the whole thing.
Yeah, no, no, I, I.
Any other pages?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-2848, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation from medium-density residential, MDR, to high-density residential, I N D. And amending the zoning designation, that's incorrect, yeah. So, it's, uh.
MDR.
Yeah, okay. So, we will have to, uh, correct this typo on the, uh, title of the ordinance. So, let me begin again and correct. Ordinance number 2019-2848, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation from medium-density residential, MDR, to, uh, industrial, I N D. And amending the zoning designation from R2, medium-density residential, to. M2, light industrial, for a property located at 502 South St. Paul Highway, Danville County Tax Lot,
There it is. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the resolution passes. Mr. Voter, thank you. Thank you for expanding your business in our, in our fair city. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, on to item ten, council business, the council rules discussion. I think I can, I'm gonna attempt to summarize this one. So, a member of the community was, uh, asking about our timeline for the submittal of public comments. You've always seen that. As I understand it, um, we generally publish the packet, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, by Tuesday. We request to have comments by noon on Thursday for the meeting on Monday. So far, so good? Okay. So, the question is, and this was the subject of fourteen meetings, I believe, Counsel Johnson, I believe. So, the question is, I guess, the member of the public is asking, saying that the two-day period is too short for comments to get in by Thursday at noon. Okay? So, the question is, I think it's summary, and is, do you want to extend it another day? And Sue assures me that that would not create incredible heartache.
Go for it.
Whoa.
So moved.
So moved, okay? You cannot do it. Well, we gotta.
You gotta give me direction to bring you back to resolution. It's not by resolution, it has to be amended by resolution.
That's correct. By resolution.
So moved.
Welcome to go.
Okay. Uh, I think you're getting, I think you're getting the, yes, not.
So, so moved.
To Friday. So, so moved. All right, uh, council committee, are we good with that? I think that was it, right? Just that, one day?
Twenty names about the rules.
Well, you know, right? Yeah. Uh, the only other clarification is that if the ten copies are only needed if you are submitting written testimony in person at a council meeting. That's the only clarification, other clarification. Okay? All right, we good? Sue, you good with that? Okay, let's do it. All right, council committee reports. Let's, uh, go around and tell us what you've all been up to.
So.
So.
Bypass.
Yes, let's talk about it. Let's talk about the bypass.
We're collecting letters because the Oregon Transportation Commission has several new members and there's a new ODOT director, and the bypass committee will be, uh, attending the November twenty-first meeting at Spirit Mountain Casino, taking the day off, I'm wondering if they're gonna do it. Um, we have a letter that we all approved. I wanted to, I don't, I didn't get the letter until yesterday, the, with the updated facts. But what I'd like to do is update our letter with the, the most recent stuff. And I wasn't sure about the process, if we can devote on that, or if we might get some direction from the city attorney. So, we passed the letter. We all agreed on a letter that we were submitting to different agencies about the bypass. And there's updated language that the Parkway Committee recently released. I just wanna take that new language and plug it in, and then send it out and have everybody go yea or nay. Do I need to do that in the meeting?
Uh, yeah, you, you probably should.
Okay, so, our next meeting is?
The, uh, two weeks from today.
Eighteenth? So, I will be bringing the letter on the eighteenth for us to, like, that, so. Just to let you guys know.
And you can't do it being, uh?
No, because we have to pull the name, or, uh.
Oh, okay.
It's part of it.
You got it.
Um, and then, the other thing I've been doing, just to let you guys know, is reaching out to different partners, like Providence, and Bridge Fox, and St. Paul Fire, and saying, please send this letter to the Parkway, you know, finishing bypass. So, um, just to let you know, I'm not doing that. So, if somebody asks you, you can say, yeah, that's crazy about bypass. Great, that's all I have.
Okay. Voice?
I don't think I've done much. Well, this Friday, this is Friday, right? This Friday's New York Housing Solutions, next Friday's New York Housing Solutions meeting. There's quite a lot going on, and it's, like, happening all around homelessness and housing, which is cool as you can happen. There's a meeting tomorrow, and it's super interesting, very, my work session, we've been, how you've been training on homelessness, and having a county, a countywide approach to that. So, um, yeah, hopefully some good things will come out of that. And then. Yeah, that's it.
What about transit? Transit stuff?
Who called me?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's stuff going on with transit right now. Uh, I didn't hear what happened.
Yeah.
I don't know what's going on.
Well, Jay's here, so, I mean, at some point with transit, we still need a, what do you call it, transit center, right? We're still, uh, still out there.
There, there's something else, I don't know.
Yeah, I thought I spoke with Scott Hessen about, yeah, like a new service provider.
They, it was about, um, I didn't hear. Would you be a good deal?
Yeah. Listen.
Uh, I haven't been doing too much, um, and for committees, I did have a discussion with folks at Sustainable Solutions. They are, um, just feeling really jazzed about the progress that we've made in that short amount of time. And still meeting, and their, um, their meetings are getting bigger every week, or every month, uh, which is very exciting to them, and a lot more to be, to hold, so, they're stoked about the future and, uh, really just, like, ready to do the work, so. It's been awesome to keep those folks.
I think, you know, and I mentioned this to Jay, I mean, things like the solar array and that kind of thing. Uh, I think it's also stuff that we need to get the information back to Sustainability Group to know that that is stuff that's going on. So, and Jay mentioned a whole bunch of other things that, that are going on, that we'll have to make sure the public is aware of. Uh, Denise?
I don't have any news. It will need a new person in our, your committee to mine those.
Pension.
Huh?
Pension.
Oh, pension.
Oh, pension, yeah, pension, so, maybe, so. Oh, you're all volunteering, you need to make some commitments.
I'm already on there.
It's, not very often, like, hardly ever. It's very interesting, actually.
Is that you, Matt? Is that you, Matt?
Yeah, Matt's with us.
That's the one for that?
It just subcommittee meets once a year, but we're actually, we've been trying to meet twice a year for the last, several years, but-
All right, I'll go and tell them that, because Gene was like, what do you want to do?
And if you need a backup, I can-
We talked a lot about that.
Good.
You could, I would do it if you really wanted me to, but if you wanna do it.
It's fun to say nerves.
It is fun to say nerves.
You'll learn more about what's happening today at the meeting, evening.
Think about it, if you're too, like, I-
Yeah, or I could help, it's just-
Yeah, just think about it.
We will see, transit committee, I don't know how, like, passionate you are about transportation, I really wanted to do that one, but it's a really awkward time.
Is it during the day?
It's three, five, and then-
In back or is it here? Well, think about that, transit.
So, it's not too often.
Yeah. But it is, it is important.
Very important.
Very important, so, okay, well, yeah, think about that. And that goes with any council, you know, any of these things. If you're finding it to be, you know, challenged, just let us know, and we'll find somebody, like Gene. What do you need to know, Matt, on a nurse?
We don't have a deadline for Denise to know. We're holding off on getting on our next meeting until we address this vacancy, but-
Okay.
I don't have anything, except for I will just take this time to get on my soapbox for like, two seconds. I was just appointed to the board for Yanho County Head Start. Something that is, I think, of interest from a global perspective is that our Newburgh Center, we have, I think, 19 families on the waiting list that are just barely above the income level, which means they're living in poverty, but somehow they just don't quite meet that. So we definitely have a need for those sort of in-between services. For families that don't quite meet that lowest level, but can't possibly pay anything for a preschool type. So we just, we have a huge need in that gap. And then also to say that there is a really great prenatal to three program. So if you know someone who needs to get services and eventually will want Head Start for preschool, please send them our way because you can start prenatally. And then they have a seat when they turn three in the Head Start program. And they will do home visits, they do all kinds of great stuff. So, and the outpours for kids and families are like, crazy high for that, for that Head Start program stuff.
Very good. Let's see, and I've got, oh, speaking of children, a family place did their fundraiser recently. I think you were there, but it was-
Yeah, it was great.
It was great. Very well done, that's an organization that's doing incredible work, and so, you know.
Yeah, it's just amazing.
You were there?
I was not there because they-
Oh, you got my permission.
Well, no, they, but they had so many people wanting to come that they did not have enough room for me to bring a table. They were at capacity, and they couldn't, they couldn't give me a table because they had already filled everything. So, it's awesome, and so they, we need a bigger facility next year.
There's also the white hat, the white hat light fire. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, yeah, pretend. If anyone wants to, I think I have it.
On the family place, my, the air actually is working, partnering with them to build a community garden on their new lot.
Oh, nice.
And then gift it to them. Awesome. I'm wherever their new lot is, I think it's on the south side. In the trailer or something? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's all right now, yes.
All right, what else, what else I got? Oh, did a podcast. Yes. Pretty, pretty cool, pretty- Yeah, yeah, I know. The thing that'd be great is, like, it's taking me like, eight months to open this thing. Something called GovLove, which, that's catchy. And that's not quite nerves, but GovLove is pretty good. So anyway, at some point this will be released, and it's talking about all the wonders of Newburgh and why all of these would-be city managers should be applying. I'll send that around, y'all can shuffle it, be stuffing over whatever it was. Anyway, next, 10C, discussion of holding meetings around the community. Sue, did you wanna talk about that, or?
Counselor Curtis Gamroy is on the issue tracker, is the person who requested an update on it back in September.
Yeah, I mean, I can start off. One of the things that we had talked about a while ago was trying to look at, what would it look like to hold some of these meetings in different places? And my thought was not to do it like, every week, because that would be pretty meritorious, but maybe like, months, a quarter, meet in a different area. And, you know, just, just, I think like, even at the library, like, we just met in the library. I felt like it was great to just kinda change the scenery a little bit. I felt like we did get some different people coming in. I thought we might do a similar thing if we met at Edwards sometimes, or if we met at Friends You sometimes, or whatnot. So anyways, it's something that I think would be great. I don't wanna, my priority is to not make it incredibly meritorious for staff. So that's why I thought maybe once a quarter would be easier than a panel, but it would still be a step in the direction of saying, hey, we wanna make these meetings a little bit more accessible, change it up a little bit. That's, that's my thought.
Logistically, how challenging is that?
Well, you've seen the equipment issue. The, the other thing is, you know, if you know far enough in advance, it's, it's also letting the public know.
Right.
Because sometimes there's confusion when we move. What about? Maybe not only a business session, but like, a work session, and community outreach. You know, because we have a number of issues coming forth that are-
We do.
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, that, we, I mean, that way, we could capture things, but it wouldn't be motions and all that other stuff. It would just be kind of an open forum town hall, kind of, just general kind of, you know, we might say we're gonna cover these three topics, but really listen to what they have to say. And we can do that one, too.
There's just one other logistics issue, and I don't wanna discourage you from what you're planning with. We are looking at trying to go fix base camera system in here, video system, so that we can blow up the wire, great streaming of your meetings. So that obviously will not be transportable where we go.
Like you said, if it's more of a listening session than anything else, then maybe that's-
Yeah, I really like the idea of doing like, quarterly, how are we doing, set work sessions, and going to different places.
Yeah, maybe, well, maybe we could try that work session, that way, by, you know, what do you think? You want, you want us to have to try it that way, you know, listening session?
Yeah, or maybe we, you know, do it once a quarter, and we go out and each talk about what we've been working on, and then hear what the community has to say, and I, you know. I, I would harken it back to kind of the, almost the neighborhood chat type of thing, but this is a vision document that, you know, we're only on a bigger scale, you know, this-
Your staff meets every Wednesday, tomorrow morning, so our Wednesday mornings will look as, so we'll flush out some ideas for you.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
Can I ask just a clarified question about that? So you're describing a, an additional council meeting, not on one of the regular council meetings?
Sounds like an additional, another.
Like a, more a town hall than a council meeting.
Sure. Okay, and I think that resonates with some of the comments that we really received, so it's probably wise. Items to add to the issue tracker from this evening? I've got the sidewalk at Virginia Garcia.
Yes.
Negotiation with IT and engineering, and the roles in the interim city managers' hire and fire.
Can you maybe get those two back off through a couple of some thoughts?
Sure.
So one, with respect to the engineering and the A and S P piece, they got a counterproposal from us earlier today, letting time to sort of preempt this gathering, but they did have that. So, there's ongoing discussions, and honestly, it's not a council issue anyway.
Was there like, an issue around timeliness or something?
I'm sorry?
Is there an issue around timeliness, or what prompted that?
I don't know, I think there's more time this on both sides, so I'm gonna log a little bit of follow-up on that, but, you know, the United Party seemed to be rushing to, to get to it again, we're not to today. So anyway, they have a counterproposal, so we'll see how fast they respond to that, and we may get to get supposedly a little more quickly and take this issue away.
I still, personally, I still see it on the tracker, so we can check it on it next week.
You're welcome.
Just make sure, and if something would just like, you know, very, it was resolved, that's personally how we're discussing it.
It's my fault you have the tracker, so she, at least you have the-
Long was the other?
Well, the other one was the role of the council, which is related to, because I think it's pretty hard to clarify this all. So at some age in your charter, says the manager pro temp has the authority and duties of manager, except that a pro temp manager may appoint or remove employees only with council approval. So your role is strictly limited to acting on recommendations of the superior pro temp manager, when you have a pro temp, otherwise you have no role. I don't know if there's any source of confusion if you read that language.
Well, if we put it in issue tracker, we can say we discussed it tonight, and it's cleared us. And then, so leaving the sidewalk. The only other one I've got for issue tracker, and we talked about this one, is the see, click, fix. All right?
Right.
And if we could make that applicable to all departments, for both, you know, words of praise and complaints due that ever come in.
You put that in here?
Yeah, if we, if we, I mean, I don't know what that takes to do.
You start with the issue tracker, and then we'll, we'll go talk about it instead of, or separate.
Right, is that okay?
The Virginia Garcia, that's through the sidewalk, do we know who the property, I'm picturing it like, particularly- We still have a lot, like an open lot.
I don't know.
Oh, hi, hi.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, so between where the clinic, or the clinic, all of those organizations lot, and the lot that has like, the CrossFit and that-
Oh, it's right in there?
Isn't it, is it like a pass?
Yeah, yeah.
Doug, make sure I don't go crazy here, but it looks like, according to this map, that there's been development around everywhere with that one piece of property, and so that's probably why there's no sidewalk there.
Yes, that's right, yes.
And so-
But who owns it?
I don't know who owns it.
I'd have to look up to see who owns it, but you're correct, it's a parcel that hasn't been developed yet in the future. Get a sidewalk. Don't know when the future is.
That's the trick.
That's the trick.
Do we, could we at some point- If it's not too much trouble, find out how much it costs to put that piece of sidewalk in?
That's something Jay and I can talk about, you've been having ongoing conversations about the sidewalks. But Jay, Card, and I can talk about that.
That'd be great.
Come back to later with an idea of what it costs.
Just a ballpark?
All right.
I'm curious, what kind of, no, I agree.
All right, anything else with issue tracker, or anything else? All right, so, for the next item on our agenda, item 11, we'll be entering into, we'll now be into executive session. And specific purposes pursuant to ORS 192660 Part II, legal council concerning legal rights and duties regarding current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. So, Representatives of News Media, Designated Staff, and Other Persons will be allowed to attend the executive session. All of the members of the audience will be asked to leave the room. And in fact, we all will be leaving the room, we are heading up to City Hall for this. We will be back to, if nothing else, close out the meeting, adjourn the meeting. I don't know that-
Everybody have action following the-
There may be additional action.
Yeah.
Well, if there is no action, not everybody has to come back, but I can just come back and gather-
You'll be in the floor before this.
Oh, you're in the floor, everybody comes back.
And you need to finish reading the announcement.
Yes, I do. No decision, okay, all members of the audience, no, no. No decision was made in this executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room, or the council meeting will adjourn, we will not return to open session, but we will come back here. Hang out, welcome to hang out, till we come back. All right? All right, let's go, and then I'll announce the city executive session when we get up there. We're bringing the city council meeting for November 4th back into session. Okay. Okay. We've got a draft resolution here, Resolution Number 20193621. And why don't I read this, is that the most appropriate, all right, recitals. The resolution accepting the findings of the final investigation report. The City of Newburgh retained Barry, Elsner, and Hammond LLP to investigate a complaint brought by Human Resource Director Anna Lee. The City also retained Todd Lyons, Officer, and Phillips LLC to oversee the conduct of the investigation and to advise the City. Attorney Heather R. Martin conducted the investigation and prepared the final investigative report, which was presented to the City on October 22nd, 2019. The final investigative report represents the culmination of a complete and thorough investigation into the conduct alleged in Ms. Lee's complaint. The complaint alleged professional misconduct by public safety officers in the Newburgh Police Department. No discipline has been issued to the accused officers. Pursuant to ORS 181A.8303, a public body may not disclose information about a personal investigation of a public safety employee if the investigation does not result in discipline. However, a public body may disclose the information if it determines that non-disclosure of the information would adversely affect the confidence of the public in the public body. ORS 181A.834D. The underlying complaint alleged misconduct by and between managers and department heads of the City. The City Council therefore believes failure to disclose the final investigative report would be perceived by the public as an attempt by the City Council to cover up potential improper conduct. This perception would adversely affect the public's confidence in the City Council and the City. Transparency to the extent allowed and protected by law is important to the City. Subject to protection of the attorney-client privilege, communication, and personal identifying information, the City wishes to disclose the investigation report. The City of Newburgh resolves as follows. The final investigation report and exhibits attached as Exhibit A is hereby adopted and by this reference incorporated. The issuance of any discipline based on the City's same findings contained in the final investigative report shall be referred to the City Manager Pro Temp for further action or delegation. The Council shall permit the disclosure of the final investigative report with redactions for personal identifying information and attorney-client privileged information pursuant to ORS 181A.834D. And that gives the gist of the, of the resolution. And so the recommendation here is to accept the findings of the final investigative report as prepared by Heather R. Martin, Barry, Elsner, and Hammond LLP. Into permit the disclosure of the final investigation report to, pursuant to ORS 181A.834D. Any further comments? Okay. Shall we entertain a motion?
Do we have, is there a resolution number?
20193621.
Okay.
Mr. Ray, I'd like to make the motion that we adopt Resolution 20193621.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, Resolution 20193621 passes. And unless we have anything else, anyone?
I need a progress resolution.
What's that?
I need a progress.
Okay, other than that, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.